...Trattford School Director's meeting to order with the Pledge of Religions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dr. Harris, since there's no one. Roll call, they all skipped out, no sense on the roll call. I'd like to, Dr. Harris said to be fair to the people from the library who are here today to discuss library funding and what they're doing with the school district and is there, please stand, identify yourselves.
Sure, it's actually Mary Ann, did you say, how is she pronounced?
Guzman.
Guzman, alright. She's actually a vice president of Penn Township.
Penn Area Library.
Penn Area Library.
And thank you for having us here this evening and for all your support in the past. But at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Doreen Miller, who is our librarian, and Pat Capetta, who is our children's services coordinator.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us time this evening to speak for a few minutes about the library. As Mary Ann said, I'm Doreen Miller, the director of Penn Area Library, and with me is Pat Capetta, our children's services coordinator. I have passed out the folders for you, which includes a letter to Dr. Harris, as well as highlights from our children's department in 2015, along with our 2016 budget and pie charts with our revenues and expenditures in it. A couple of the items I wanted to point out this evening. Well, first, thank you very much for your support in the past years, and we are looking forward to a continued partnership with the school district, the librarians and the teachers. One of the stats I wanted to point out, which is located on page nine in your packet, is our outstanding children's circulation, particularly in children's fiction. The figure is total for children's and teens, sixty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-eight in circulation. Our total circulation for 2015 was one hundred seven thousand three hundred sixty-two. So, our children's circulation represents nearly sixty percent of that figure, which is pretty amazing. The other figure that I wanted to point out to you, which Pat will touch base on a little further, is our summer reading program. As you know, we have, we participate in an annual summer reading program. This year's theme was "Every Hero Has A Story." We had over a thousand kids register for the program. We hold a end party, grand finale, and four hundred, about four hundred and fifty kids and a couple hundred adults attended that. So, it is very well received. It's so much fun to see the kids there. And I wanted to highlight our children's programming. We have, I've been sending our monthly calendars to Jay so that he can see the excellent programming that we hold every week for kids. We are looking forward very much to further developing our relationship with the librarians in the school district and seeing how we can work together to have the kids reading early and continue that love of reading and learning throughout the school years. What we are planning to do with, you can review the packet at your leisure, and then we'll come back next week. If you have any questions, feel free to email me or note them, and then we'll be sure to answer any questions you might have next week. And now, I'd like to introduce Pat Capetta, who will talk a little further about our children's programming.
Thank you for having us this evening, letting us speak. And to let you know, I'm sure you all realize, but it's very, I'd like you to know that it's the children that come to our library program. We feel like we're in partnership with the school district. We take up in the summer where the teachers leave off, and we provide programming for the kids all summer long. We start from age birth all the way through teenage years. And like I said, we had over, we had eleven hundred kids in our summer reading program. This summer, we have had a thou, over a thousand in past years that I've been there. We provide programming, books, a place for kids to come, to have a place to go in the summertime that's safe and educational. And we provide a way that the kids do not then experience the summer slide, which is they have done tests and programming with kids that they say that if kids do not read in the summer or attend the library, by the end of sixth grade, children will lose the reading skills and will be two years behind their classmates. So, we start with the kids at birth shortly after, and we provide programming for the kids so that they do have the literary skills, literacy skills, pre-literacy skills, and the knowledge that they need when they come to kindergarten. Because we, as you know, they have, the kindergartners have to have a certain set of skills in order to be successful in kindergarten. And we really provide that to the kids in this district. On page five, it tells about the different programs that we have. We have a Books and Blocks program for the little ones, toddler programs, preschool programs, and we get these kids ready for kindergarten. All of our story times and programs aren't just stories. They provide a lot of pre-literacy skills that these kids need in order to become successful in kindergarten and after. So, we feel like we partner with you. We feel like we're important to the children in the community. And if you read over this and see all the programs that we provide, the special programs we provide, I think you will see that we really do provide a very important service for the Penn Trafford School District. Thank you.
I want to have a question.
Sure.
I think you sent a letter, you were asking for nine thousand for funding, and then you was asking for six thousand additional. Is that in addition to what we normally pay here?
For 2016, the amount that has been allotted to the library is five thousand six hundred. When I first started in March of 2014, that amount was eight thousand. Then, it was reduced to seven, and then for 2016, it's fifty-six hundred. And what we were proposing would be support for our children's department in the amount of nine thousand, which will help to cover salaries, programming, and library materials, and our special events that are literacy-based. We do have outside performers come in, Stage Right, Pittsburgh Puppet Works, which present programs based on the summer reading theme. The additional six thousand dollars, there is an excellent series of computers called AWE Computers, and that amount, our computers in the children's department are very old, ten years old. Pat isn't even really sure how long they've been there, but they're pretty ancient. And we would very much like to acquire three AWE computers, which are completely learning-based. The early literacy station is not connected to the internet, so there's no concerns with preschoolers accessing inappropriate material. They are focused on STEM learning. I do have one copy of the brochures for those three computers, which I'll be glad to give to you. And that amount of six thousand is kind of an extra amount that we would, hope you would consider as you make these decisions to take a look.
Is AWE a software?
It's the entire system. It's a computer and the software. The early literacy station comes with more than seventy software programs already pre-installed. The After-School Edge has more than sixty-five programs installed on it. And they support the curriculum. They offer
Yes, my question is, do you buy one without the other?
Hmm, probably the software, you could. I haven't really looked into that. I do, on the brochure, there is a listing, for example, Britannica Human Body, Math for the Real World. I'm sure that these programs are available, you know, you know, through a vendor. And I will give this to you because it does show, the keyboard is all color, in color-coded with the different letters, so it's easier for the kids to learn keyboarding skills. And everything is built in, and the cost includes the IT support as well. And there is another computer, which I had already given this information to Jay. It's called a Student Learning Center, which is designed to be used in the classroom to support learning activities. So, it's, they call it an out-of-the-box type of program. Everything is set up and ready to go. So, that's why they are, the early literacy stations are actually in about forty percent of the libraries in the United States. Locally, Ligonier, Scottsdale, Marysville, who else? Pat has the early literacy, Malpleasant, I think.
I think so.
Yeah.
So, is this a one-time, six-thousand-dollar spend?
Yes.
And what kind of annual maintenance charge or whatever is associated with the AWE program?
Computers? I would, I would need to speak with one of the librarians who has one at her library to find out more information about that. I know the IT support is excellent, so, and we do have our own IT person at the Westmoreland Library Network as well, who is certainly able to come in and troubleshoot anything that might be going on with the machine itself. But I've, I-
So, the whole time software itself has an annual licensing fee or maintenance fee?
I would have to check into that. That's a very good question. Yes.
We also support the Manor and Trapper library. Are they with you people on this? Do they work with you at all?
We're all members of the Westmoreland Library Network. So, as such, you know, we meet every other month, and we really-
I mean, the special tutoring program that you have here.
Oh, no. No, this was-
Is there a reason why they aren't with you? Is there-
In regard to bringing in AWE computers?
No.
Just in general, I think, I think people from Level Green and Trapper don't really benefit from this because they're Level Green and Trapper.
Oh, no, they, they definitely do, they do.
That's why, that's why they should be here also. I mean, it'd be, you know, if they're benefiting- They're, they're not, the students, I think, is what they're-
The students, yeah, the students.
The Trapper library should be here, somebody representing Trapper library, because they're, if we give you extra money, you know they're gonna want extra money.
Well, we are, we're like, we're separate libraries, even though, and I know that you do represent the other, the students. They're certainly, the students are certainly welcome to come to our library and use what we have. We just have, what we feel like we have the means to support the kids and to give the kids the programs that they, they want. We have the funding, you know, some of the funding that we can provide. A lot of the summer programs that, that we do provide for the kids, and the large-
But AWE, the head library at Trapper and Manor, do they work with you on these, on these programs you're showing us right now?
No, they do not.
Is there a reason? Do you invite them?
They are separate libraries. They have their own, they provide their own programs for kids. But we do have the kids from Manor come to our programs, the kids from Trapper, you know, come to our programs. So, we, you know, are all-inclusive of everyone in Penn Township.
Okay, alright.
I think, so the point would be, if you talk to them, we centralized where this was for the district, could they pay you some small stipend as part of, instead of, you know, you asked us six thousand dollars, can they each give a thousand dollars and help support the program? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I'm looking for-
Because you don't, I don't think you need to bring a librarian from Trapper to Penn's library and have them help support it. These guys are supporting it.
Well, but I think they should know more. The, I think, Trapper library, our end, okay, the western end, I think they should know what's being offered out here, because, you know, I just think it's, just like, no, they just sit and have the conversation with them, just to be aware, so they can possibly benefit, you know, the kids down there. Or, maybe they know some kids down there, and help them bring the kids up here to help you guys, you know, to benefit all the kids.
I think they're well-aware of what we do. We do know what other libraries are doing, but we are still sort of separate entities.
Geographically, I do-
Geographically. But, so, we're not really, you know, they're not a, you know, any type of-
We fund them all, that's what I'm saying. That goes us in that situation.
Correct. What we are proposing is that what we have to offer, all the kids in the Penn Trafford School District can come and, and use our facilities and our programs.
As long as the kids at Trapper library knows that, and the Manor library knows that, that they're welcome to send kids up there, then I think that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I'm asking you.
Well, maybe, like I had, I've had a chance to view a lot of their programs. They've been open for the nonsense. No kids, the kids are coming from Level Green, they're coming from Trapper because they know.
Okay, that's all, that's all I'm asking.
They've convinced me a lot of that. They got a sophisticated program, really tight with us, pushing kids to the forefront. They're motivated, they're exceeding, preparing our kids well for the early child programs.
I just want to know if they, okay, that's fine.
I have twin nine-year-olds, and I've never heard of this program. So, so, I'm just saying, maybe their publicity side of it needs to be a little stronger.
We're, we're in the newspaper, every, just about every week, our summer reading program, Pat prepares a flyer for Take Home Tuesday, as well as for our special programs. We also, we have the website, we're on Facebook to promote our programming. We also have a very strong word of mouth. Our, our summer reading program has been going on for nearly twenty years. So, this is an annual event.
May I jump in for just a second?
I've got a quick question for Pat, though, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Bill Chassek, can you tell me, this looks like this is a new program, correct, this one-age school station?
Yes, we don't have that.
So, currently, are you, look at Ms. Coiner here from Sunrise, the elementary principal. Do you currently have any programs you offer elementary-age students that you're working with them out of school to promote better reading skills, other than a summer program? You following what I'm asking?
Yeah, I have a, my, my girls' reading club, which meets once a month. It's a girls' reading club from age of twelve, and we also have a teen reading club.
What's the age?
Age of twelve.
What about seven, eight, nine, elementary, younger kids?
Okay, we have a program, well, our programs go up to kindergarten age. So, we have the babies, and we have the toddlers, and preschools.
I saw that in your-
And then our, our preschool kindergarten class actually includes the kindergartners. So, that's age six and seven. So, are, then our-
You've got something for first, second, third graders?
They could, they could start, like, at age eight, they could start in our reading program. So, and then anybody like seven and eight.
So, currently, you do not have any joint partnership with any of our elementary schools on a program after-school to help promote that age group, because that's obviously very important for them to be, to honing their reading skills at those ages. I think if you don't, I think that would be a very great first step for you guys to, to cement more of a building or a learning relationship with the district. If you would've come in here and said, you know, we currently are working with McCullough and Sunrise and Level Green, and we have programs in with these aged kids right now, I think that it would, I don't know, it would've been more, more interesting to hear those. Now, this is, this is a first-time thing. I'm glad that you're, you're bringing that on board now. But I think that, you know, to help the relationship between both groups moving forward, my recommendation, and I don't think any of these kids, you know, whether some of your numbers in the reading private, they like to read.
Oh, yeah.
And I think if we offered them more programs, from your standpoint, I think that just, that just helps open up certain areas, I think, if you, if you see where I'm trying to get, get to.
A first step that we've taken with that is the Battle of the Books that Chris Chesky has started.
Yes, I'm on the foundation. I'm quite well-aware of what she's doing, and I was gonna bring that up to you, too, as me and Dr. Harris are on the foundation. This could be something very, very interesting for us to hear and support.
Yes, we're, yeah, we're working with-
So, I would work through, yeah, I would work through her to bring this to our board, to see if that's something that we would be willing to look at, to find. So, I just wanted to give you that.
But we do have our, we do have our book club that does incorporate, it's like, our kindergartners come like through six, and then others like that seven-year-old that's probably left in the large, but then from eight until twelve, we do have our, our girls' reading club that, that meets once a month. And we also do programs with scout troops and, and, you know, different groups that come in.
You wouldn't currently happen to know what, what amount or number of the actual Penn Trafford students are enrolled in your library?
No, we, I would need to run a report.
That'd be, that'd be a very interesting number, too, to know, that we're supporting this many kids with the money that we're, you know, allotting to the library program, you know, supports five hundred kids out of the four thousand that we have going through our system. I just, I just wondered if you knew that. Maybe you can get that back through Jay.
Certainly.
I can ask another question.
Sure.
The eleven hundred-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry. The eleven hundred and three children that came through your summer reading program in 2015, how does that compare with 2014? Are we trending up, down, staying the same?
It's a pretty, it's level. It's always been a little over a thousand.
Yeah, we're up, we were up actually this summer, maybe twenty kids, so, but we have stay over a thousand.
So, over the last couple of years, you'd say it's been-
The last couple of years, yeah. Back in two thousand and twelve, I think we went to a height of maybe like twelve hundred. That's, we partnered that summer with the summer school and, you know, worked with it, so we got extra kids in for that program. So, and I also, I just want to mention, not, for some reason not this year, but in the last three years, over at McCullough, I did have a program with the third-grade teachers in which I lent, I'd get together a box of books for third-grade level, third and fourth-grade level, and send them over to the school, and then the kids could read those books in their classroom and check them out in the classroom. Then, they would send them back to me. So, it was an active program with a school, you know, with the teachers.
That's good.
And that when, which they were using the, the books and then bringing them back. So, we did have a program with that.
Thank you.
If, if the money was coming forward that you're requesting, what target would you have for next year? Instead of eleven hundred, would you have a target to say that this was a successful year?
Well, we-
What would you be shooting for?
We always shoot for, for more. We try to get more. We, we feel like this, at this level, that is a really successful program. So, anything above that, and we always try to target other populations, daycare centers, teenagers.
Yes.
So, we're always looking to, to get more kids in, whatever way we can do it. So, our goal is always to increase, I don't have an exact amount, but certainly, any amount that we can, can get in is terrific.
The teens that register range between seventy to, I think in 2014, it was ninety-six. So, that's a pretty good number, but I would like to see that increase. And speaking of teenagers, I did want to mention that Pat has about twenty kids, high school kids, that volunteered during the summer reading program to earn their community service hours. And they are a dedicated group, and we could not carry off our summer reading party of, that four hundred and fifty kids attend without those teenagers coming in and helping us out with their energy and their talent.
They come in all summer, and they participate, they help out with the summer reading program with the kids and their books and tallying their, their, you know, their books up and giving them their tickets. And so, yeah, that's another way, because really, we are helping out the high school kids get their community service.
And they're a fun group of kids, very dedicated. I also wanted to mention, there's a little picture of Pat in the sixth grade in your packet. Yes, so you had, yes.
And that was in the sixth grade?
No, no, no. And I promised her I would make the picture smaller as possible, which I did. And I, the other thing I wanted to mention in regard to partnering with the school district, Pat attended the STEM Huddle on December fourteenth, along with two of the Penn Trafford teachers. She also completed a six-week, six-week training program through the Marysville Library, who had partnered and obtained a very generous grant from the Math and Science Foundation. And they put on a six, a series of six training classes all day for the librarians. And that took place from January of 2015 through March. And I, I attended the last one because Pat had another professional development program to go to, and it was, it was intensive. It was an eight-hour-long day, learning about how to blend STEM topics and theories and science experiments in with our story time. So, I look at it as, this is a real opportunity for us to nurture this budding relationship between the school district and the library. We're open in the evenings, we're open on Saturdays. And granted, our programming has focused more on preschool level, but certainly there's an opportunity to bring in elementary kids as well.
One quick final question. What prompted this, these programs you're asking for funding now? Is there something you, did the teachers approach you on this? Is this something you were seeing with your own participants at the, at the library, that they were failing a certain area? Why, why now? Why now with this stuff?
Oh, we have, we've always provided these programs.
No, I'm talking about what you're wanting for the funding for this year. That's a brand-new programs, that's what I understand, anyway. The two early literacy stations and the literacy-
Oh, the computers?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Well, the fact that our computers are so old and are in need of replacement, and I've always been drawn to the AWE computers. They always have a presence at our state conference, and people just flock to them because they're so easy for the kids to use. So, I've always been drawn to that particular setup, because it's, you take it out of the box, you plug it in, and it's ready to go. So, I've always been attracted to that. And my two previous libraries, we did not offer it, and I would really love to offer those computers to the kids here in Penn Trafford.
Okay. I asked Dr. Harris, can I touch the Trapper librarian and the Manor librarian, too, see how many kids from those two communities do club and benefits your program. Nice presentation, ladies. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we'll, we'll discuss this in our next executive session.
Okay, thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Same here.
Thank you.
Okay. See how many speakers we have, how many visitors we have, a few ladies want to stay. The rest of the agenda, I don't think you're interested too much. You're welcome to. All right, information, Dr. Harris?
You would need a special report.
I'm sorry, geez, I'm with, okay. Special report, I, Mr. Harris is not here today, Chris Tech myself. Okay, we had a, a beautiful, well, I think we do at the educational part first, then I'll come back to the background. At our meeting on December the sixteenth, our VOTech meeting, Joint Operating Council, anyway, the, Bill Braska, who was asked, he was asked to vote for the vice president, he decided to resign from the board because of his vision problems and driving on a dark road, and Bill said, Nick, I'm seventy-nine years old, I, I just want to give it up. So, he gave it up. And you got a flyer, a little ballot to vote for Richard Albright, and he's a very nice guy, for vice president, and I hope you did support him and didn't send, get into him. Okay, now, they're starting a, that meeting was on the December sixteenth. They're starting a new program here, and I just got a flyer on it today, come through the email, and it's called the Workforce Development Educational Opportunities. It's to have middle-school kids go down to the VOTech, and I'm gonna, Mr. Dr. Harris picked up last. When I was in Norwin Senior High School many years ago now, and I thought special needs kids there, I had a very cooperative, Mr. Mayhew was our guidance council, had the guidance department, and I got him to send all the ninth graders down to VOTech, so they could all, one whole day, they fed them, they toured every twenty-five, twenty-six shops, or it was at that time. The kids had a chance to go around and observe all that was going on. And it worked out. And to this day, Norwin is still the only district that does that. And it worked out. And to this day, Norwin is still the only district that does that. Now here's a program right now that Mr. Dr. Harris picked up on it. And I'll let him in detail with, that's coming up.
Yeah, they actually started with, I was just pulling up the email today, so we just got the information. Greensburg Salem did a test run where they were starting with middle school kids, giving them exposure at the career, the career tech center as well as the workforce development liaison where they're trying to develop. And what they're going to actually do is they want to actually bring a team of teachers, a middle school department chair of science, math, social studies, English, and a guidance counselor to actually come down there and see what courses we offer and how they can actually benefit the students at the middle schools. We kind of want to hit the students, I think, once they come to the high school, they might have already missed that opportunity. Even if we offer career awareness and opportunities, we start, we, we want to start developing it, promoting it younger.
I think it's a good idea.
So in March, we get to go, it'll be our teacher training day and after that then we get to promote with the kids.
So you will physically take the kids on a tour like Mr. Chirsey talked about, or could that be something that?
That's coming out of the original contact.
It's, it's even, even if they don't, the students don't enroll, it's just a good, it's a good filter.
Well, they get a better understanding for those who don't go. They get a better understanding what those kids who go there are experiencing. So I, I think it's a win-win.
It's a definite win. Thank you, Dr. Harris. Now for the banquet, Christmas banquet, which was kids very well, and I want to thank Mrs. Issing, Mr. Leonard, Mr. Chastis, Mr. Raderazzo, and Dr. Harris. Mr. Nimitz was ill, he couldn't make it. Here's what you, the delicacies that you missed on, I have to keep them, I make sure I kept this menu in my back seat, you know, I could just.
I figured.
Pour a little bit of salt on a one, you know. Okay, the cold hors d'oeuvres included vegetables with ranch dressing, meat and cheese, snowman, patty cheese balls and assorted crackers. Hors d'oeuvres. Pizza pinwells, sweet barbecue meatballs, mini beef Wellingtons, mini quiche, crab puffs, olive cream puffs, spinach, what's that? Anything real tasty. It was filio. Hot artichoke dip and bacon wrapped scallop kebabs. Dinner included, dinner roll, of course, it's that simple. Lobster bisque soup, Parmesan risotto bites, pan roasted halibut and white bean ragout, roasted vegetable turd, desserts were burnt almond torte and citrus sorbet. They had cookies were ladyloks, thumb prints, raisin tea cakes, nut and poppy seed, cakes, chocolate chip cookies, buckeyes, Oreo balls, caramel cups and fudge.
The cookie table, it was set up like a wedding and it was huge. I mean, it was just, and I mean honestly, I go, I go for desserts first.
I gotta tell you, Nick, when I came home, I told my wife about the Oreo balls. I said, do you want to make me some Oreo balls? And she did make me some more.
And even the ones dipped in white chocolate.
In white chocolate, it was, it was, they, kids again did an excellent job and they, very well done. And thank you very much for coming. Everybody did come.
The people that, the students of the year.
Yes.
They were phenomenal.
Yes.
They read their resume. These people, those two kids were amazing.
They won ten thousand dollars each in that year. Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct. The program's been there since seventy-five. It's been really very successful. I'm glad you guys came. You got a chance to, but to, to help out, Dr. Harris, I think the cookies was his hors d'oeuvres too.
I went there first. My bother.
That's very colorful. I never saw it. What are you doing? And our next VOTech meeting is on the twentieth this month. Okay, that's all I have for the career tech. Okay, executive, uh, information, Dr. Harris.
All right.
Our executive session, we discussed the.
Second decision, budget update, construction information, program studies updates.
Okay, that's good. Diesel fuel?
Diesel fuel.
All right. Because the diesel is going down like other hors d'oeuvres. Okay, information, Dr. Harris.
Okay, I'm going to start off with Mr. Engleis in the construction update.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Did quite a bit of work over the holiday. I felt surprised. It was good to see the construction workers there and over, over the Christmas break. Do have some good news in the auditorium. That will be very confident that the auditorium will be available to the district on January fifteenth. Things are progressing well in there, so we're, we're almost done. Got to finish up some final touches on some things. But we're ready to go January fifteenth, which is good. Did get some, still don't have good news on the gym day, the new gym. Still have too much moisture in the floor, so we're doing another test tomorrow to see what that moisture content is. Hopefully we can get that floor down very soon and get that, that area turned over to the district. The guidance area right across the hall here, right down the hall I should say, is going to be turned over to us in another approximately two weeks. January eighteenth is what we're shooting for. We are going to start the kitchen area and the cafeteria on March first and that's significant because we'll have to shut down the kitchen and build a temporary kitchen in the main cafeteria, which means we'll have limited menu offerings from March to the end of the year. So the kids will still be served a lunch, but it will be limited offerings. And we need to do that in order to have the cafeteria all done, the kitchen area done when the kids come back to school at the end of August. So it's one of those necessary evils, construction inconvenience that we have to deal with. We also have, actually good news, we really don't have a whole lot of change orders to deal with. But one of the, one of them is good news, we have a credit coming to us. In the pool area, we have a duck sock. It's basically duck work in the pool that, instead of doing traditional duck work, there's a, another alternative where you can use a, it's more like a fabric. And that is a cheaper option and it is still a quality product to use, so we're going to go with that. It's a, it's a green and it's going to be, it's going to be produced in green and gold with a Penn Trafford lettering on it. But we'll get a credit of approximately twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and we think that price will go up a little bit by the end of the week, once we get some final pricing on, on some of the lettering that's coming back to us. We do however have something to go against, to go against the contingency. We, we need to add a batting cage to the gymnasium. Batting cage that we currently have is old. It was taken down, so we do need to install a new one. It will have a cooling system, electronics, so it'll go up and down. And that is for a price of fifteen thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. But that is not a change order. The district will be purchasing, purchasing that outright. So we only have one change order, only two approved. So the rest of the construction update, I'll let Renee and Hank handle if you guys want to talk about anything. No?
You've done it.
Yeah. I mean.
We're, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I don't know.
Scott did a great job giving you the update.
I'm not sure that we even need to go through all those areas unless you want to.
There are just a couple of areas, one locker room, sorry, it was a typo. We're not checking the moisture in the locker rooms. Locker rooms, ceramic tiles on the floors, painting's done. We're going to continue on that. I just want to make sure because it was not typed correctly. I do apologize. The other thing I do want to mention are the logos. Logo application has been completed in the annex gym, the wrestling room and the fitness center. They do have more logos to go, but I definitely wanted to point those out to you. TV studio, something Scott, you didn't mention, is demo's done. The beam should be here next week. They've already got the roof drain, which you all approved in a change order. That work is also complete. And in the office on, it's not the bocce ball. I thought it, it, what's the?
TV studio.
Yeah, I think it's, it looked like a bocce ball court. What is that court, the green outside the?
Oh, the, the court, the, the exterior courtyard out there?
On the opposite side, I think it's an athletic office or closer to the band. There is an office there. The flooring is complete in there as well. You now have all light poles installed. I don't know if you guys have noticed on, over by the trailers, all the lights are installed. So now all the light poles are up and I will tell you, it makes a world of difference back there. The mechanical equipment, Whitby, who is our HVAC contractor, they are actually working ahead of schedule and they're getting a lot of the air handling units, which will provide the air and the heat. They're working on those now rather than waiting until this summer. So they're getting a lot of that pre-work done. And the last thing I really wanted to bring up is we did have a safety incident last Thursday. I do have the report. If, I'm, I'm actually going to leave you guys a copy, but I will tell you, he was down in the basement and it was an accident. He got an arc. It was a electrical arc flash, burned his hands. He is stable. We had our project meeting this morning, talked to the project manager from Bider Electric. He is doing fine. But I do want to bring that up so everybody's aware of it. No, what it was is there was, I don't want to call it a panel because it wasn't. It was junction box. And the existing wires were laying on top of it. Well, they took it off, did the work that they needed to. Now when you take out their half, half inch screw, you know, on any junction box, took it out, not a problem while in the process of the work that was being done there. The wires then came together when they screwed back in. This one blew this one and it was an arc flash for him. Yes, he did. As a matter of fact, he did have a flame retardant vest on and still, still, we had a, the gentleman down there, the other worker that was down there tapped him out, so he was okay. He was conscious when he left. Everything was fine. They are returning, not Wednesday.
And we will, of course, provide you everything, just like the incident report.
One more.
Yes, sir.
This is the second month we see the humidity too high. Is there a next step that they could take to drive that down? We just seem to keep testing. Is that all you can do or is there a plan to bring?
One of the things that they can do, other than, other than turning the heat up and putting, and making air move across it to try and dry the concrete out. If that, if that doesn't work by the time that they need to start putting the floor down, they can put a, a sealer over it that seals the moisture out and stops the moisture from coming up into the hardwood. They're, they're trying to avoid that because the, the, that product is relatively expensive and it's on them and they don't want to have that cost incurred. But if the moisture doesn't come down and we get to the point where they have to do the floor to meet the schedule, that's, that's what they will do.
That's huge. I play the gym right now. They must not have done it right. If we get that hot day, cold night, I think we're spotting all over the place.
What's, what, the concern with this is, isn't that as much as if the moisture in the concrete is too high, when you put the wood flooring down, the wood flooring absorbs the moisture out of that slab and starts to swell. Or, or when the concrete dries out, then it, it makes the wood shrink and you end up with, with more gaps. So.
Is it possible to bring in some industrial sized dehumidifiers to pull that out?
They've talked about that in the, in the meetings.
We have requested it. They have not done it.
They being?
The general contractors.
That would, that would take care of the problem, you feel?
It could possibly, yes. But we're going to find out tomorrow. They're either coming in tomorrow or Wednesday to do the test. Of course, Messera will be present. We're going to look at the reading that they're getting. From there, we're just going to take action.
I'm just asking you, since I'm a strong advocate, so it's all right, Jim. Please don't put the wooden floor down until you're very satisfied that all the moisture's out there. We don't want the community, six months from now, a year from now, saying your boards are warped. Okay, we can't use the gym before we're going to pull up. That could get very testing.
And you're.
And you just wait as long as you have to to dry that concrete out.
Correct.
We don't want any regrets. We, so far the community seems like they're satisfied. We want to keep it that way.
Well, I won't tell you the contractor who's doing work.
They're not going to warranty the work unless it's, the moisture content is low enough to install that floor. So there's no fear of that happening.
We don't want any, any unnecessary, please.
The floor contractor refuses to do it unless, unless it's eighty-eight percent or less.
Correct. They won't do it. So.
Is that the standard number, Mr. Engleis?
Eighty-eight percent is what I've been told, yes.
Please, make sure they, they hold that. And this will, and Mr. Messera died. That was your founder, I guess, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Engle was his one.
A question, there's nothing to do with construction or that. Actually, it's more of a statement. Please pass on the condolences related to the loss of your, the founder of your company, Mr. Messera. Highly respected man. We appreciate what, this continued on with you through the company.
Any more questions?
Excuse me, I wanted to ask Mr. Engleis or whatever. Is it ever possible to give it any, anything on video to show the board? Because you're asking us sometimes to approve things that we could maybe visually see rather than taking a tour of some of the things that are going on. I don't know if that's possible. I'm not saying a, you know, Cecil B. Demille production, something with their own cameras or whatever, but just.
We can very easily provide some photographs, things of that nature.
I think we used to, we used to do that too. We used to have photographs in the update. I don't know how we got away.
I greatly appreciate it.
Depending on what it is, some things are photo, some things you can't do a photo with. We could certainly do that. And I'm not sure if you're aware, we do have a weekly slideshow that is on our website every week that shows the progress and there is a, there are photos on there of the progress. It's not necessarily change orders. Sometimes they appear on there, but not always.
Yeah, I'm thinking one of the change orders in particular are good for us to see and say, we're proving something.
It's a good idea.
Thank you.
I don't know if you know this one, Jim, but Rich in Dallas and I think.
Scott.
No, no, Dal, you and Rich, you, Rich and Dallas and.
Jim Bracco.
Jim Bracco. Is that a weekly, bi-weekly?
We meet monthly.
They meet monthly to go over all the stuff.
And you're welcome to sit in.
Yeah, you're welcome to attend those meetings too.
I need to be educated on that.
No, you're welcome to be there. You're a board member.
So there's, those guys actually vet a lot of the stuff that even get, you know.
Dallas will tell you where, what time they're, if you want, you want to sit in. Okay, anything else? Sure, Jim, we was hoping to have that done in November, but as long as it's done right, that's the most important thing.
Right.
Okay.
You do know that Nick's paying for that, Jim. That's why he wants to.
That'll take care of my nest egg. I guarantee you that much.
No more trips to the Vatican.
You got to get there. I kept on telling you that. You will never regret it. Okay, Dr. Harris.
Sure. Budget update?
Right. You want to just give a?
Well, I was prepared to give a thirty-minute speech, but I think for the sake of everyone here, I'll try to keep it short. I had hoped this month to be able to come to you and give you the details finally of the fifteen, sixteen budget. As you know, it was due, passed by the state on June thirtieth, which is the same deadline, which we have met every year. Here we are the first week of January and they aren't even close to a budget. It's very possible that the governor will have to give his fif, his sixteen, seventeen budget presentation before the fifteen, sixteen budget is passed. So that's a pretty sad state of affairs. We've already committed basically what taxes we're willing to limit ourselves to next year. So we're already in the next year's budget and yet here we are still working without a state budget. Just very briefly, in December, there was finally a consensus reached between the governor and legislative leaders on a thirty point eight billion dollar budget. When that budget was presented to the House of Representatives, they couldn't get the votes. The House in turn passed a thirty point two billion dollar budget, which was sent to the governor for his signature. The original budget agreement had called for five point eight eight billion dollars in basic education funding. The House budget called for five point six three billion dollars in education funding. But the governor decided that that proposal was not accepted. He used the line item veto option. He reduced the overall budget to twenty-three point four billion dollars with two point five billion dollars for basic education. Now, the only good news I have to report, if you can call it good news, is that tomorrow we will get our first payment of the year from the state. It represents about forty-five percent of last year's allocation. So there's still a lot of work to be done. They're still a long way apart. And there was an article that I read, I believe in Post Gazette today, that said, you know, Pennsylvania is one of the few states where there's not a punitive action against the legislature if a budget isn't passed by the deadline. That's why we're sitting here in January without one. Most, every other state has some sort of trigger that, that requires action. So I wish I had more to report. Not really sure how the dollars are being driven out. The, the spreadsheets were just coming out this afternoon. I may know more by next week, but again, we're a long way off. But we will be building next year's budget, you know.
Two months.
In two months, we'll have the first cut.
Correct.
So, yes, ma'am.
Both budgets that were proposed, the original budget and it was a thirty point eight billion and then a thirty point two billion.
Yes. Yes.
The basic education funding, how, were there the increases, decreases, pretty much the same?
The $30.8 billion represented a $350 million increase in basic ed, which, according to the governor, and it's probably debatable, but that's one of the largest increases in, in history. Now, if you take the stimulus money, those increases are more than that, but that's all debatable. The $30.2 billion budget would have been a $100 billion increase, the current budget is about a $3 billion decrease.
The stockgap budget that they're putting in?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's where he's at, that's where we're at. You know, I'm not, I can't cast blame on every, on anybody in particular, because they're all to blame, there's just no reason that, you know, our elected officials can't get this thing figured out, like you all do every year as your duty called you to do, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Thanks.
Thank you. As more information comes in, you know, if I get anything important, I'll send it out via email, if not, I'll report back the next time we have some.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Finally, under information, just want to remind you, the Dependence Traffic Community Education Foundation is having their first bash on January 16th, and this is our fundraiser for the year. We normally do the dance with the teachers, or this Kiki Got Talent, or some type of fun activity to raise money, and this year, it's the first bash tickets, you can get tickets anytime by contacting the school admin office, so, please, so...
What time is it, that day?
It's 6 to 11 on January 16th, and you don't have to be present to win, but we'd love to have you there. Plenty of purses, and, you know, many, you can get them for your wife, items for your collection, so, hope to see everyone there. Next week, under athletics and curricular, we're going to ask you to approve the renewal of Exella Health Athletic Training Service Agreement. I believe this agreement is outstanding, we have it until 2021, 2022, and the cost is only going to go up to $32,000, which is a 15% increase, so we're getting outstanding service, and that's one thing that I'm very proud of, because the ladies who work for us through Exella right now are at every game, and they do a lot of great work for our kids, and the cost, to be that low, you remember when we first went to them, we saved over 50% of savings, so each year, times our savings by the last, you know, eight years, and already, that's one mil, so keep up the good work, and I'm glad we're still with Exella. We're going to ask you to, as separate as nations, employee personnel, approve extracurricular volunteer and volunteer coaches. Under budget and finances, we're going to ask you to do, approve expenditures with high school renovation project, according to the schedule, which we talked about tonight, approve the change orders, which Scott addressed as well, award the bid for diesel fuel. Brett, do you have any information?
Last year, the cost of diesel fuel, and we bid through the Westmoreland Interview Unit Consortium, last year, the consortium paid $1.90 per gallon, this year, it's $1.63 per gallon, now, our contract, the, our contractor pays the entire amount of the fuel bill, so it's actually going to be a great benefit to First Duke this year, and hopefully that'll help them put some new equipment on the road and improve our service.
And next week, under budget and finance, approve purchase of new control system and replacement of the NCM controllers, is that something of big savings?
It is going to be, well, we're currently operating on a Windows 95 platform, you can't get parts for it anymore, when it goes down, they, they have to try to scavenge parts to get it to keep running, so because of the new system, the high school, we don't need a control, a contract this year, the savings from that will pay for these upgrades in the rest of the district.
We don't have anything for buildings, grounds, and safety, employee relations, negotiations, transportation, food service. Under personnel and curriculum, approve substitute teachers, support personnel, approve leave requests, approve student-teacher assignments. The final approval of the Pentraffer High School Program Studies for 2016, 2017 school year, I'm just going to give you some of the course titles versus reading through them all, so we don't really have. Under art, we've added ceramics three, remember, we took that off last year, but we see the need to keep growing it and creative crafts. Language arts is doing something very interesting, instead of the English twelve, we're actually customizing the courses and offering them different selections and titles, such as sports and literature, literature to life, short fiction, poetry, independent novel, Shakespeare, classical lit, media criticism, creative nonfiction, children's list, science, fiction and fantasy, Greek and Roman mythology, and from Frankenstein to Poe. So some good choices, and it's a great MCL opportunity. Under science, our new forensic science teacher, Mr. Rocco, I keep going to call him Mr. Bracco, I always do that, names just sound alike, he's actually added a forensic science two class, it's going to be an honors course.
College level.
We have so many students who took forensic science one, that is, are interested in considering with the program, so he's growing into level two, and that's what he did at his prior school, and you can get college credit through Seton Hill. Under our STEAM classes and tech ed classes, computer integrated manufacturing and principle of engineering, remember, these are the courses that are growing from our new middle school components, once we've added project via the way to middle school, these courses now are being expanded at the high school. In addition, we made architecture and robotics through an honors course. The reason we're doing that is we have a lot of the kids going into the engineering program in their college studies without overtaking one of our engineering courses, because they're worried about the GPA and their, the weighted issues, so we realize that's a problem, because we actually want the kids to take those courses, so we need to actually address this, and we actually made them an honors course as well, because they're that important for students going into engineering. Some courses for the summer academy, we're going to offer in cartooning, which is under, I guess, the art class, and food chemistry, and a couple other changes that we have, you know, eliminated, it was tech ed, was the manufacturing tech, that's just been recycled and renamed, and then their language arts, literature, life, literature genres, we did that to accommodate the new courses that are coming. So there's other changes as well, but that's the bulk of the changes. Under personal curriculum, approve conference requests, under policy, public relations, legislative title two, tentatively approve revised board policies, and appoint a PTARK representative. Under taxes and cens, insurance and cens, we don't have anything to report.
And we just discussed recognition of visitors. Motion for German?
Motion.
Mr. Gachasik, may I motion, second, or most second, or most second? Some, some hours, don't figure, say goodbye by saying aye?
Aye.
Nice meeting, thank you everyone for coming.